But it's a bit of a case of out of the frying pan into the fire because now the pandemic is sort of moving aside for climate change. So I really don't know how to pick them, I suppose, in that sense. But no, it's exciting stuff, I think. So I'm Sean, anyway, Sean Turner.
I'm Emily Reynolds. I am currently Waste Technical Officer for Preston City Council. So I deal with sort of recycling projects, well, that's sort of my side role. And my main day-to-day job is sort of, you know, with developers, planning applications for the city, that sort of thing. But yeah, happy to get involved with this project as well, so.
Yeah, I'm Andrew Hodgson. I'm a chairman of a variety of things, some in the public space and some in the private space, but I'll kind of list them all. But the reason I'm here today is I'm the chairman, executive chairman of a business called Recycling Lives Limited, which is headquartered in Preston on Essex Street. So Recycling Lives are one of the UK's largest metal and waste recycling businesses. So we basically process about, just north of about half a million tonnes of material, metals, per year, all of which is exported. We're the largest, for want of a better word, scrap堆of cars in the UK. In fact, I'm just acquiring a business down south and I mean, there will be probably around three hundred thousand cars per year that we take off the roads and obviously repurpose all the material to... We're the largest waste electrical processor in the UK. And so we run a waste, we call it what's a waste electrical compliance scheme, which, what's that, what's the electrical compliance scheme is? So we work with a lot of the major brands. And we have an environmental services business, which basically we focus really on cardboard and plastics and commercial, the commercial waste sector. Although we do quite a bit of construction waste, but clearly packaging waste is very important, which is quite relevant to the discussions today. The important thing about Recycling Lives for us, though, is our social purpose. So we know, the way I phrase it is, we create more social value than economic value. So I wanna create social value in ahead of my profit. So last year, we created twenty-two million pounds' worth of social value. And that comes in a number of forms. A large amount of it's through our reoffender, our reoffender prevention programme. So we're in eight prison academies. My chief exec's actually up in Scotland trying to sign up seven Scottish prison academies, where we get people onto our scheme. Our reoffending rates are about three percent, against a national average, about sixty percent. And it's quite a complex programme. It's run by our partner charity, Recycling Lives Charity, which we effectively fund in its entirety. So that's a huge part of what we do. We do homeless prevention. I have a, actually, if you come to my office, you know where my office is, one floor of that is a homeless man residential unit. But that's really to do with people transferring out of prison. And we also, but we have a bigger residential scheme with private landlords. And we also, in partnership with Fairshare, do Fairshare for Lancashire and Cumbria. And last year, we did about eight million meals through that. So that's about, that was about eleven million pounds' worth of the social value we've created. So, and the reason I'm here is because Beth ran me one day and said, "Help, Andrew, help." But clearly, you can see how interested he is in kind of plastics and, you know, we just need to, obviously, being headquartered in Preston. We're very proud of the city and our heritage and, you know, anything that we can do to kind of help on this agenda. You know, we're a full circular economy business, you know, we're just kind of passionate and Preston is our heart, so we wanna help.
Great. Well, I think, Andrew, we should have been speaking before, so I'm...
That's why I came, Rick, so you as well.
So I'm Rick Hindley. I joined Podback back in the middle of May. So Podback is a new organisation set up by the major producers of coffee. So that's Nestle and Jacobs, Dowie, Egberts. And they, together, they produce about seventy percent of the coffee pods that are put onto the market. So they were running their own individual recycling programmes for pods, both aluminium and steel pods. Sorry, aluminium and plastic pods, I should say. And they got together, two years ago actually, to work on a project to facilitate pod recycling across the UK in collaboration. And they strive to get other coffee pod producers to join. So since I joined, we've had another smaller coffee pod producer join, Cafe Pod. And we're in discussions with other pod producers as well. And we're also in discussions with all the major retailers who also put pods onto the market. We aspire to make coffee pod recycling as convenient as possible to consumers. And as you can imagine, during the last eighteen months, coffee pod sales have gone like that. And so ultimately, we aspire to provide coffee pod recycling in partnership with local authorities to around a hundred and fifty local authorities across the UK, working in partnership. And we see ourselves as pioneers, in a way, in that the way that packaging is collected in the UK and funded in the future is going to change. So obviously, you collect packaging at curbside at the moment, and the costs of that are picked up by the taxpayer effectively. Those costs are gonna shift to packaging producers from twenty-twenty-five-ish. Now, coffee pods actually aren't packaging, they're not classified as packaging. But our members have decided that they want to go ahead of the packaging regulations. And so all of the work we do with local authorities is funded by Podback and our members. So since I joined, we've launched coffee pod recycling with five local authorities across the UK. So we started with Cheltenham and South Derbyshire. Since then, we have launched with Chichester and just last week in Oxford. So where pods are collected on curbside alongside other materials. And we have a number of other partnerships to be launched in the next few months with more local authorities. And just to emphasise, it's done on a cost-neutral basis. So we pick up all of the costs of collection, capital costs and operational costs. The pods are recycled, the aluminium ones, a company I'm sure you know well, Tandem in Congleton in Cheshire. And the plastic ones are recycled just down the road in Manchester, at Royden Plastics. So it's all UK reprocessing, very transparent, and we're very proud of what we've set up. The work that we do with Beth is inspired by Beth and is very much breaking the mould in terms of what we, the model that we've developed. So the primary model is local authorities, but we also have a partnership with Collect Plus, where you can get bags and you can drop off pods at Collect Plus, six and a half thousand Collect Plus retailers across the UK currently. And this is the first scheme where we're working effectively with the voluntary sector. So, which is an interesting trial for us and, on the face of it, going really well. But what we would hope to do is to develop it into a partnership with the council. Not maybe just Preston, but other councils in Lancashire for a potentially county-wide scheme. And be very interested to talk to Andrew about how we can collaborate as well. Because I think the values that you've just discussed and the type of organisation you are. Previously to joining Podback, and this is directly where we should have been talking. I've worked in the aluminium industry for the last thirty years, running for the last fourteen years, AluPro, which is the aluminium packaging recycling organisation. Before that, I've worked for Novellis, who are just down the road in Warrington, who are the biggest recycler of aluminium packaging in the UK. So why our paths haven't crossed, I don't know.
Well, because I'm a relatively new boy.
Oh, okay.
I'm just a private investor that kind of came along to fix a business that just happened to have all of our views that I kind of share. So I'm an aerospace offshore industry guy, would you believe?
Yeah, so there's lots we can talk about.
There's lots, there's plenty we can talk about.
I'm Sonia Phillips. Beth asked me to come here today to support her, but I'm also representing Climate Action Preston, which is a grassroots local community group. So we're all volunteers. We are part of the Friends of the Earth Climate Action Network, which is about two hundred and fifty groups across the UK now, I believe. And we, so we started in twenty nineteen. So I'm founder and chair, and we have a number of sort of small community projects that we're setting up. So we have a repair cafe that's just about to have its third event. We have a children's clothing library. These are obviously about reducing waste and reducing consumption. So we're very much, you know, interested in this scheme and supporting it in any way we can. But we also work with the local council to lobby and to try and encourage robust climate action funds to reduce emissions as soon as possible. So, yeah.
Okay, I'm Beth Balsall, I'm not used to talking, I'm usually Michael does that. I'm the juror, he's the talker. For obvious reasons, I'm not very confident. But we set up Plastic Free Preston South West a few years ago. And we've now, we were asked to take over Plastic Free Preston, when the people that set it up are all at university, so we took that over. Over the pandemic, we've done several events, Glitterpicking, et cetera, et cetera. And we're very much involved with environmental, in the community. One of them, so many people kept asking me, "Where can we recycle coffee pods?" And it's just stuck in my head, and I just thought, "I'm gonna take this on and tackle it." I just like a challenge, and if I see a challenge, I normally succeed somehow. There was another, I've done quite a few things. There's another, I was a bit bothered about the bins. Preston City Council couldn't provide bins without wheel. So I approached Glaston in Blackpool, and they've offered to donate three bins worth three thousand pounds. So I can put one outside Stainbury, one outside Aston, one outside Mores. As I was saying to Sonia, and I probably, I think I'm not too sure, I don't see it being a voluntary thing forever. I really do want to, I'd like to count the council and Preston City Council to take over because it's just far too much for me to do on my own. This is why I need support from Climate Action Preston. Volunteed, you need to be done properly. This is a temporary measure. I don't envisage doing it long-term voluntarily. Couldn't probably do that. I've got other things to do and move on with. So it's up to you guys now.
Yeah, so...
I was gonna say, yeah, yeah, yeah. By the way, I've got interest as well because Beth, Beth's using some of our space for consolidation purposes, which we're happy, more than happy, happy to provide. But I think, you know, I share Beth's thoughts that ideally, you know, if we could find a way of working with the council, it would be, it's better done by the authority, you know.
Yeah, I don't see why the recycling depot at Conbenson Ray in South Ribble can't have a coffee pod collection or whatever you want to call it.
Yeah, and that's, you know, that's the sort of thing, depending on room at all these places, that's the sort of thing where Lancashire County Council could come in, especially if it's cost-neutral. Because the problem, they've looked at these coffee pods since we had our initial conversations, and it's not something that they feel they could recycle, but that doesn't really matter if they get collecting taken away.
Shall I describe to you the model, how we work with local authorities? Because we've got different...
Yeah, because the next thing I would say is that obviously, there's the districts and there's the county. And we have a Lancashire Waste Partnership, but it doesn't feel very partnership-y. It's sort of competing interests from each one. That's the thing we've got. And I think we really need to be almost looking at it through the eyes of, like, what Greater Manchester would, because they can, they control collection and disposal. And as a proper partnership, I think we need to be looking at the whole model. That's my view on it. Because then we're gonna make the right decisions, especially with climate change, rather than those that affect our individual budgets. So...
So we are talking to Greater Manchester at the moment about...
And it's much, it's much more straightforward.
Yeah, yeah, yes.
And that's how, I think, especially with climate change, that's how Lancashire and all the districts should operate, really. I mean, you know, for example, Preston, maybe in far-flung places, why not, why don't South Ribble collect them while they're out there anyway? But, you know, that sort of thing. I think we really need to...
I think for us, I've been speaking to Duncan about this, who's the head of waste management. And it's similar to sort of batteries in the sense that if they were to be collected, they would have to be collected with something else, with, say, compost bins. Pop them on the top of the bin, and then they'd be collected within the, within the lorry. And it's a case of where's the space for that within that. And so there's that kind of disconnect currently with the vehicles that we have.
Well, if I explain the models that we've got, then you'll see how it could possibly work. And it's early days, so we've got a number of different schemes working to see how they work. So the first, and this, I think, so the first one is in Cheltenham, and they actually have curbside sort. So they have Romaquid vehicles with different compartments on them. And they collect, so, sorry, to take a step back. So householders first of all sign up through the Podback website. So we promote it in the area, and there's a twelve-week communications programme that supports the introduction of the pod scheme, to get people to sign up. They go to the Podback website, they put in their details, and they get sent back bags to put their pods in. Then they can put their pods out either with their dry recyclables, and they're sorted and put into a compartment on the wagon, and then actually put into the whee compartment. But we've also equipped their RCVs with cages underneath the cages. So they can also put them out if they want, when the residual is collected separately, again, on top of the container, and it can be put in a cage under the vehicle.
And you've covered that cost?
We've paid all of the capital costs. And we've also equipped some spare vehicles, just to make sure if there's any time when we're out of capacity. And then in the depot, we have put the same type of pallet boxes which have got, or you've got, your premises. And then we manage all the logistics, all the costs of shipping those pods then to Tandem or to Manchester. And that works really, really well, and you're more than happy to talk to Karen, who runs that in Cheltenham. South Derbyshire is slightly different. They collect on the day that they collect their food waste. And we've, again, equipped the vehicles with cages underneath, and they put the bags under the cages, sorry, in the cages under the RCVs. Interestingly, I went to South Derbyshire and the guy who runs it there said to me, "I was dead against this. We should never have done this," he said, "I thought." Then we put it in. It's been so popular with residents. It's so easy. It's like it's been going for years. And again, we've picked up all of the costs for that. So that's the second model. Now, the third model, which has just been introduced into Chichester, is that we funded an electric vehicle, an electric van, in partnership with textiles and batteries and whee. And that van is going around picking up textiles, batteries and small whee and pods. And that's just been introduced into Chichester. And so those are the three models that we're currently operating.
And is that, is that going round sort of on demand?
It's going, it's, that one is, now, I can't remember exactly the model on that one. People register on the, on the website for the bags, and then it's going around routed based on where the registrations are. So Cardiff, we're also about to introduce exactly the same scheme through the whole of Cardiff and Wolverhampton.
What about for the, sort of, the textiles and the battery aspect of it?
So that, so that is done on a regular pass, so...
Right.
Yeah, so they, I think it's done every two weeks.
Okay.
But I'd need to check.
So that would have to cover the whole area?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So we'd need funding for a separate crew for that?
Absolutely.
So you would fund that?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So Wolverhampton, we're funding, Chichester, it wasn't necessary, but Wolverhampton, we're funding the staff to, for the vehicles as well. So we're taking this really seriously, and I think this is the forerunner of what we're gonna see with packaging. So our members have said, "Yeah, we recognise there's costs in this. We recognise we can't do it without local authorities. We recognise that they shouldn't do it for nothing, and we will cover all of the costs of doing it."
So this is the extended producer responsibility, and you're just basically ahead of the curve?
Exactly, yeah. And we're not waiting for government intervention. We've just said we're gonna do it.
And there's nothing, obviously, there's no real alternative to the plastic pods at the moment, is there, really?
Well, you have aluminium ones as well.
Yeah.
But no, people say, "Well, we shouldn't be using these things in the first place." My answer to that is that we're faced with reality. People are using these things. They're growing dramatically. And actually, if you look at some of the life cycle assessments, if you look at the total thing, they're actually better than instant coffee because of the amount of time spent boiling a kettle and things like that. It's measured. And so actually, the carbon impact of pods is lower, believe it or not, than getting coffee out of a, that you would put and then boil the kettle with far too much water and et cetera, et cetera. So you can look at it many ways. I've worked in the aluminium industry for the last forty, what, thirty years, and aluminium doing great things on recycling. So it took quite a lot to encourage me to leave because the ethos, but what excited me about Podback is that this really is producers taking responsibility, and it's this big sign of things to come, and it's really creative. So you can question pods, whether we should be using them or not. It's a reality that they are being used. And I think it's incumbent on the people putting them on the market to put a facility in place to recycle them. And the really exciting bit is that the aluminium is circular, so it's going back into packaging. We're just working with a plastics reprocessor who's going to invest to get the pods back into food-grade plastic. So it will go back potentially into pods, so it will be totally circular. So, and this is part of the commitment, so it's not industry just doing this because it feels it needs to. It's serious investment to make this work, to make sure that pods are a circular, circular material. And the coffee, by the way, is obviously recovered and goes to anaerobic digestion and ultimately a soil improver, so it creates energy and then goes to be sold, so everything is...
Yeah, so on that anaerobic digestion, that's, we have some, two facilities and one particularly at Farrington Leyland Way, which was set up all singing and dancing when it was a PFI initiative. But then very quickly, that didn't work properly, so we're looking at, I mean, it's gonna take some big investment, but we're looking at that because food waste is another thing that's looming large. It didn't do what it was supposed to do back at the time. It's before my time here, but I heard this story about it. I think it was, there's problems. It wasn't the right equipment. So we think there's obviously a way of bringing that back on, especially looking at the food waste coming down the line. So, yeah, it's, it's gonna be, the problem, I think, is gonna be some is the amount of things that's at people's doors. The amount of bins and things like that, that's gonna be a real issue. And again, why I think we really need to tackle it as a true partnership, because it's, if you're in a small terrace and you've got all these, they're not gonna want them.
No.
So what do we do with that? Do we, do we do what they do on the continent? Do we look at some areas of communal pickups? I don't know. I don't know what the answer is. But I know that you're talking about six and seven type bins, aren't they? That's gonna be a big problem.
Yeah, it's taken me, I live in a terraced house, and we have too many bins in our backyard.
And that's already...
Yeah. In Spain, they actually have, you know, we have alleyways at the back of our houses. Why do you not just put them, one, that's what they do in Spain, one big bin?
Yeah, and that's what I mean. That's exactly what I'm saying.
So you only need one big bin to empty. You'd have it in a central location, say, one in Ashton, one in Fordham, one in Cotton, and do it that way.
But you'd have to keep the sort of elderly and vulnerable on a pickup because...
Yeah, but you've got neighbours.
Yeah, but you're still cut down a lot of the, and that's, again, that's what comes down to this. How would we do it across Lancashire if we were starting afresh? So geography-wise, how would we collect it? Would we do it differently?
I wouldn't necessarily do it door-to-door personally. I would do, have one big receptacle.
Yeah, no, and I think that, I think that could be something we could, we could look at. Because with all them bins, bloody hell, I mean, it's bad enough now with three.
Is it in terms of the different waste streams that we would wanna put in, like textiles and...
All that sort of stuff, yeah. It's, how do people store it, certainly?
I've visited Conway Council District recently. They had stackable ones on the sort of the trolleys. I thought that was quite a good space-saving, and they just wheeled them out to the...
Sort of not like the standard wheel event, no, do you?
No, they were smaller, kind of like, a bit bigger than caddy size.
They're boxes, basically, yeah.
Yeah, kind of like boxes, and they just stacked with a sort of a flap at the front. They were quite, you know, they wouldn't be good for, you know, and they were collected weekly. So potentially not for your recycling or, because I've found they filled up quite quickly. But for stuff like textiles or whee or, you know, coffee pods and things like that, then that could be a potential option to save space. But then it comes to things like your flats, what happens with flats, student accommodation. That would be another thing to consider. That's a massive one that I deal with. And then you come to contamination. That's another thing. What, I mean, what happens with the contamination side of things on...
Well, obviously, we try and minimise, like, everybody, contamination, but it can be taken out of the reprocessor.
Right, okay.
So, but because we're collecting in bags, you can tend to see what you've got anyway.
Yeah.
So when the lorries won't take it anyway if it's, if it's not in a bag, or the local authorities. And so typically, the contamination levels are actually really low.
Quite low.
Yeah. The flats and sort of multi-occupancy buildings is something that actually we had a meeting about yesterday. So we're gonna do some trials on those as well with sort of communal containers. Because we're talking to some London boroughs, which is obviously really important in London. So, yeah, we're looking at all of these different options. I mean, the way it tends to work is if, if you were interested in exploring it, actually, we work with Unomia. So they will speak to you, and then they will model it for you and develop what we call a business case, looking at the costs and work with you in terms of how collection could work for you here, what the costs would be. And then we develop a business case which says, "Right, this needs this amount of investment, first of all, for CapEx, and then on annual OpEx." And obviously building the communications costs as well. We then take it to our finance group, and they say yes or no, and we haven't turned one down yet. So, yeah, so, and obviously, as we go on, we're getting more and more experience in terms of participation rates and things like that. But something like thirty percent of households, believe it or not, now have a machine, a coffee pod machine. It's grown that much.
Yeah, someone said they hadn't bought a coffee machine until, because they couldn't recycle them, but now they can recycle them. They've got a machine.
Yeah, so that's an incentive for yourselves as well, isn't it?
Yeah, exactly, exactly. Because, I mean, if you think about coffee pods, there are two barriers for people. One was cost, and the second was their concern about, actually, is this a sustainable way to be making my coffee? And so that, our members said, "Well, we can, the price one is a bit more of a challenge, but we can actually solve the recycling one." And the consumer research we did said that, I think it was thirty-four percent of people we spoke to said that they didn't think coffee pods... Sorry, they did, only thirty-four percent realised that coffee pods were recyclable. And then when you asked them if there was a scheme in place, would you use it? The level of people was about ninety-plus percent who said, "Yeah, we would use it if it was, if there was a scheme in place," so...
Yeah, I've been contacted by several residents asking about, about it, to be honest. When you first got in touch, I think I've said that.
I could hear you.
When you first got in touch, I think I told you that I'd already been contacted in my first few weeks in it about coffee pods. Why can't we recycle them? So there's definitely demand there, and you're obviously finding it across different parts of the country. So in terms of county council, household waste recycling centres, what sort of thing do you put in place that can happen?
In household, we're not that keen on going down the houseside recycling centre route because we realise to make this work, it's gotta be as convenient, as easy as possible. Hence, we're going for the curbside route. We have agreed to trial some household waste recycling centres, and the first ones are gonna be in Suffolk. But at this point, we've said, we'd really prefer, our priority has to be curbside to make it as convenient as possible.
Yeah, to be the cost-effective recycling centre.
Yeah, exactly. So the participation rates are gonna be very low?
I would agree with that.
And for us, it would be much cheaper option.
Yeah.
But this is, this is actually about getting the pods back, not just about making it look, making it look good. So curbside is where we wanna be.
So in terms of where, I mean, how long does it usually take to sort of get finance sorted, get something like this in place in terms of what you've already experienced?
We can move as quickly as the authority can. I mean, we're often waiting on the authority. So let me think. So Cardiff is a good example. That's going to launch, hopefully, October. And the business case went to our finance group, would have been the end of May, because it was soon after I joined. So, but the delay between May and October is... Would have been the end of May, because it was soon after I joined. Um, so, but the, the, the delay between May and October is. Um, actually about getting the vehicle and, um, and that side of it. Um, but the contracts are all signed and, because we've got, the contracts, we've got fairly standard contracts now. Um, so it, we've had to have some delays with some councils with the legal department, um, taking, but. And it, it's obviously, we've been doing this in a particularly challenging time for councils as well, uh, around Covid and what have you. So that's delayed us a bit. Um, but no, um, we can move as quickly as, as you want. I mean, the funding, the finances from our side is all there and we're actually behind where we hope to be in the budget because of Covid. Um, so the money's not a problem.
Right.
Yeah.
So you'd be talking, so like you're twelve district councils and then the two, uh, well, it's three up here, isn't it? About two unitaries.
Yeah, bring it on. Yeah.
So.
We have, we have, our target is to, to, um, yeah, get to fifty, to provide curbside services to fifty percent of the UK households. In the next three years. Um, and so to do that, we need to be talking to the Lancashire's, the, the big and, and the final findings all there.
Well, it sounds, it sounds good from where I'm sat. Um, obviously as a district council, um. It sounds good and it's something we should explore.
Yeah, I think from, you know, from speaking to Duncan, the main concern was cost.
Hmm.
Availability of staff, vehicles, but if that cost is all covered.
Hmm.
And that doesn't become an issue anymore. And then potentially there's even the option of using vehicles to collect. All the waste streams. That to me seems like what's, you know, what's.
What's the catch?
Yeah, I mean, the only other catch would, for me, would be that we've only got two recycling officers in the council.
Hmm.
And then it becomes, um, with food waste coming as well, it becomes a lot of extra work for us. Um.
We manage all the comms, so we do that part of that. So we have, uh, a company, an agency you may be aware of called Get It Sorted. We do a lot of wraps comms and they're doing all of our comms for us.
Right, okay.
So they manage all of that. Sorry. Yeah, so they, they manage all, all the comms. Um, so we're trying to minimise.
Yeah.
The need, the input from, from local authorities to make it as easy as possible.
Okay.
Just on the, the other, the we and the textiles, and this is maybe where we need to have a conversation if you've got a we compliance scheme. So we're in discussions with, um, we compliance schemes and also textile recyclers about joint ventures. So, um, Manchester is an example that, and Cardiff is also, um, going to be a joint venture with. Uh, a we compliance scheme and also the UK's largest textile, uh, sorry, the textile recycler is Manchester. So the, the UK's largest textile recycler. So we recognise to make this work, equally from our point, cost effective, we need to be doing it with others. But equally, going back to the residents, it makes it easier for them if they know that they can put these three or four different materials together and they'll go.
But then structurally, as you say, I mean, compliance scale, you know, that's, that's the, the pitch we're making around our. Plastic, our, uh, our packaging is that we think that's actually gonna naturally sit alongside our compliance scheme. So we're, we're, we're hot on compliance. And, and actually plastics and cardboard at, at the moment, they're just tr- treated as a waste stream. We just do commercially, but actually that's all going to, I think, gonna emerge. Um, and I, I do think there's a place where. You know, smart businesses will kind of consolidate all of that together.
Yeah.
You know, so, so there's a commercial advantage to doing that. I think one thing, just because I'm aware of the, the landscape here, but I think being able to bring the parties together. You know, Lancashire is a complex structural, political, so political structures. And, 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 you know, I think it will be, from an economies of scale point of view, it will be better if we could kind of.
Absolutely.
Well, I totally, I'm thinking of the Waste Partnership there. It's a good example of where we can test the water and, you know, get involved in, in, as a unit. And really look at it, you know, we, I think it's all gonna be looked at because all the stuff coming down the line for regarding climate change. We need to be joined up on, particularly on waste.
We need to be in it together, don't we?
Yeah, we need to plan.
Yeah.
Look, from a helicopter view, and we need to plan how we're gonna do it all. And I, and I think that's what I'd like to see.
And I think from my perspective, what we're offering with pods is actually, as I say, is a forerunner for coming, what's coming with packaging.
Yeah.
Probably four years. It gives you the chance to put your toe in the water.
Exactly, yeah.
Understand how it's gonna work and actually be in a better position to be actually get what you want from the packaging compliance organisation. When that's created and, and comes to you and says, right, we wanna do this. So it gives you, for me, it ticks all of the boxes where I would wanna be. If I was in your, 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 your position. And, and as you've said, we all know that it's, if you can. Add an additional, uh, service or it's what a household does want and it, it certainly looks good for the council. And if you can do it at no cost, that's even better.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, definitely.
I think it would be, uh, you know, like you say, a good time to dip our toe in the water. Certainly something I, I'll, you know, I'll, I'll certainly, uh. Push for that amongst partnership.
More than happy to come and make a formal presentation if you want to agree.
Yeah, that, I think the next one is in November. So I've just had the other one.
Hmm.
Um, so I can try and arrange that for you.
Yeah, absolutely. And I can, um, if you wanted to speak to any of the other authorities that, um, we're working with, that'd be no problem. But, I mean, the week after next, it's not, obviously you're not in Scotland, but it's the Scottish Larrac Organi- uh, Conference. So the Local Authority Advisory Group Conference. And we've got Karen who, from Cheltenham, coming to talk about her experiences with the scheme. Because I recognise that local authorities like to talk to each other, learn what's happening and how it works. And it's better to come from, from them. So Karen's actually coming up to Scotland to talk at the conference and, um. But she'd be more than happy, or any of them would be more than happy to do a phone call or whatever, to find out how it's working, what, that they really think about it. And I don't think it'd be surprising.
The, the, the main driver.
Yeah, unfortunately, we'll be there, but unfortunately we were too late to, um, get a slot.
Oh, okay.
To, um, to speak. Um, so they couldn't get us on the agenda. So we are talking in, in Wales and Scotland, but couldn't get on the national one. But I'll be there, so I can introduce you to Karen and, and, and the other local authorities who we're working with. Yeah.
Great.
Fantastic.
Yeah, well, I, I, I'll certainly, um, I'll arrange that, that you could, because that'd be a good space to, to do it, where you've got the full county guy in.
Yeah.
Um.
Absolutely.
So I'll get that sorted.
Fantastic. But in the meantime, for us, it's all about how we can support Beth and, and her, uh, um, what she's doing. Which is, in my view, fantastic.
Yeah, we've got some bins in Longridge, um, we've got to put them in Lyddon outside the station. They're expecting me to pick them up. It's just like, I've gotta be, I'm gonna have to get more volunteers. I can't do it all on my own.
It's a huge commitment.
And I do separate them from the aluminium, which is plastic.
I think that's what I mentioned to you on the phone, was that if we were to go down the, the drop off point route, I didn't want you to sort of. Overface yourself, because you were talking about like.
Michael would hear then, not me.
Yes, it'd be worse now.
You know, so eight or nine drop off points, that's a lot of work.
Yeah, well, I said to him, you know, they don't seem to get the, I'm a vol- that's Michael's phone, I went, bam. Um, they don't seem to get that I'm a volunteer too. You know, they say we're all volunteers here and I'm thinking, well, I am too, you know. My pet, or whatever. I'm doing it, you know, because it's what I wanna do in Preston, but I can't be expected to go to Longridge and go up to, um, Lyddon. I'm meeting a lady from Longridge tomorrow. Um, I think Karen Buckley and her message, but they don't seem to get the, the concept. Maybe you can talk to her. I met her in York, I'll talk about it on my boat with her.
Yeah, you said, yeah.
Yeah, and so, um, I'm trying to explain to them, but it sees the bigger picture. But at the moment, the, the playing, they, I don't know, they just seem to, they're expecting me to do it all. And I'm just not, you know, I can't be everywhere at one.
And I think the solution is, is curbside.
Hmm.
I think long term, where then it comes part of the.
Yeah.
Furniture, if you will.
But the thing is, Beth, you know, because this, you know, you, if you need help on stuff like that, you just, just give me a call.
Yeah, yeah.
I have got four hundred people working here.
Oh, thank you. It's just get, basically, all I see, all I see mobile and literally just getting the ball rolling.
Yeah, yeah. No, exactly. It, it wouldn't be long term sustainable. You know, everybody who works for me gets three days community volunteering as part of it.
Yeah.
Part of it, so, so they're always looking for volunteering tasks in any case. And I have a hundred and something vehicles running around.
Wonderful.
This region, so, you know, if it's a short term fix, we'll always find a way of, of helping, but that wouldn't be sustainable long term. Um, you know, because we wanna kind of spread, spread our capacity, but understand. Well, exactly. Everybody wants to go out on our fair share run, to be honest. But, yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm from Cumbria and it's the fair share van run. Into Cumbria that everybody wants to be on, because it's lovely.
Yeah.
It's all right driving north, isn't it?
Oh, it is. Well, actually, you end up in places like, uh, Whitehaven and Workington and everyone's like, really? And I was like, well, I am from Workington. In fact, the food bank is right opposite my mum and dad's house. So, so, yeah, I mean, if there's anything in the short term that, you know, don't, don't ever leave things. I mean, they're coming back down to our unit here in any case, aren't they?
I've got a bit of a backlog at the moment, in my ba- my garden. I've got my wheelie bin full of coffee pods. I've gotta sort those out. I've got the other wheelie bin half full, because I've been, I've been on holiday for two weeks. We've got the magnums and I knew that. Got re- got those in place, so that was a big relief. I've been away for two weeks, took my boat out. Then, um, obviously ten days isolation and then this just, just happened to Michael. I'm just completely thrown, you know, that Michael, you know, what more? Go wrong.
I think you're really strong, by the way. I can't, I can't, I can't believe you've held yourself together.
Days, exactly. Um, I just wanted to be on my own. I just didn't want anyone to come around. I had everyone coming around, but I just wanted to be on my own. I've got a sleeping bag from Master. In the middle of the night, I couldn't sleep. Got in the sleeping bag, put the back gas fire on and just slept on the sofa. It was the only way I could get to sleep.
Hmm.
Um, I'm thinking about it all the time. I'm just thinking, I'm, I think about Michael every second. I don't wanna talk too much, but I just wanna carry on my work. I just wanna carry on the work that we're doing together.
Well, well.
I think that's the thing, isn't it? That, that, you know, we're here to create Michael's legacy, aren't we? You know, and, um, the fantastic work that's, that's gone on today.
I don't know whether you, I don't know whether you were raised in, in Lymeford and Ward, where you said what you've done in the community.
Yeah.
The BBC Radio Lancashire, which is in September.
Yeah.
I'd actually, just before I went away, I did a video of him, he had to raise it, raise it BBC. And then I do lots of videos. I'm not a pro, but I do lots of videos for Plastic Free Preston, to try and get people to see how interesting and, you know, what could be cool. Well, it does, you know, good fun, companionship, friend, and, um, get more and more people involved. And, um, you know, quite quick, quite some time do the video and I put nice music to them. And I said to Michael before, I mean, if I can't do a video for my husband, it's a poor do. So I stayed there all night doing this video for him. Then the day before we went, the ju- uh, travellers came to Haslam Park and they caused chaos. And, um, they left such a mess when they went. And Michael and I went down the following, on a Saturday before I flew. And, um, I said to Michael, come on, the council have been, been and gone by now, but we're gonna give them a hand when we got the hand on, nobody had been. So between me and Michael, we did it ourselves. I just, I put an appeal out on Facebook. It's, we definitely volunteered, the wrong person turned up. But we actually cleared the whole of Haslam Park together in four hours. And then the council came along on, on Mondays, but it, I just couldn't believe we were doing it. And then obviously I flew on Sunday and then the rest, blah, blah, blah. But we did everything together and it was really, really, very much, you know, don't you? Much into the environment. Our backyard full of trees, which I'm gonna donate to the park. I don't know.
Well, it was really well thought of. I, I, when it, um, when we heard about it, I know my colleagues, we've grown a WhatsApp group and. So many messages about what a great bloke it was.
Oh, right. That's a great picture, isn't it? Yeah.
And he was always smiling.
And I can't believe it's gone.
He was always so enthusiastic as well.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Don't miss them. But I just wanna carry on the good work. I teach, you know, I talked to him and to carry on. We're meant to be together and I'd. There's a reason why he's gone. I'm not too sure yet why, but I'm sorry with me.
Yeah, well, the partnership will continue. He'll be guiding you from above.
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely.
Well, well, that's, I, I, I'll commit to get you to come to the Waste Partnership.
Yep.
If that's okay with you.
Absolutely, love to, yeah.
Um, like I say, that's a certain point in November, but I'll, I'll get that arranged and then you can speak to, you'll have the right people in the room then to, to, um. To bring it on. I'll introduce, introduce you in and I'll certainly support the, the scheme ahead of you and then talking about it. But obviously, uh, you can explain the different models that.
Yeah, that's what we'll do. Yeah, yeah, show how it works.
Right, well.
And we'll have, each month we're getting more data, obviously, um, as, as the schemes develop and, um, mature. Um, but yeah, so far, very encouraging in terms of levels of participation, et cetera.
Yeah, I mean, I'll chat to my head of department.
Yeah, brilliant. And if you want to chat to any of the, um, others that are in the meantime, that are doing it, Cheltenham, South Marsh or whatever, just let me know. And we can, um, um, organise that. And apologies, I haven't got a card, but it's on the, my contact details are on the email, I think.
Got, got cards if you'd like to.
Well, I'll do actually, I'll drop you, because we've got, um, a basic sort of slide deck, which talks through what's, what we do and what have you. So I can send that through so you can, can all.
Yeah, that'd be useful.
As a follow up.
That'd definitely be useful.
Yeah, because, because I've only joined in, in May and we've all been in lockdown and really not going out. Not got any cards yet. But, um, yeah, I think it's starting to open up a bit.
Now, the bit for me there is as well, is that it's the testing it as well as a, as a Lancashire wide sort of model, I think would be brilliant.
Yeah.
Just to, um, yeah, it might help us commit to more stuff to.
How, how many local authorities are there in the partnership, is it?
So, um, well, I, I'm, it, it's, I think it's every, there's, I think there's just a couple of districts that aren't, I think.
Hmm.
Is that right? Do you know?
I'm not sure myself.
So I've only chaired one meeting.
Yeah.
Uh, and I've got a feeling that there's a couple that aren't. West Lancs, maybe.
I haven't been there long touring myself.
Yeah, yeah, okay, yeah.
Anyway, I'll find that out for you.
Yeah, okay, brilliant. Fantastic. Well, thank you for facilitating this.
I think so.
Yeah, it's on, on the email, so yeah, definitely.
No, apparently the, the, uh, well, I'll be meeting soon with the, uh, Merseyside Waste Partnership. Have you had some dealings with them?
That, interesting. Um, not directly. We had an inquiry from somebody at Merseyside who wanted, who had been speaking to South Derbyshire. Um, and so Unomia provided them with some information. Um, but as yet we've not heard anything back from them. So again, we welcome the opportunity to talk to Merseyside. So if you'd like to introduce me, fantastic, directly.
Right, or when I, when I speak to them.
Yeah.
Because they, they've gone down that partnership model some years ago. And I think there was obviously a teething problem at first. And, and I don't think it even still now is ever perfect, but apparently it's, it's better than, than what it was before. So I wanna learn more.
I mean, I think you're absolutely right. The way we need to achieve our objective is by grouping local authorities together, working together. And so Lancashire Waste Partnership, Merseyside, say we're talking to, to, um, Manchester, we're talking to Birmingham. And, um, that's how you get economies of scale and it, it really starts to have an impact.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Excellent.
Great, really good.
That's good, that, thank you. Well done, Beth.
Yeah, thank you, facilitancy. This is all about making it happen and.
Yeah, brilliant, thanks, Beth.
Thank you, thank you guys. Thank you for turning up. It's amazing we got you all together.
Yeah. And thank you for the tour of the impressive building.
Yeah, I mean, that's, this is another one, their committee room, it's quite, quite posh. It's a smaller version of that.
I think it's, um.
Look how empty it is though, still.
Yeah. So is, is, what's the policy about people coming back?
Well, it's, just at the moment, it is, um, as many people that can work at home for the time being.
Yeah.
Um, and it'll be up for review beyond that. The putting to, obviously it's a, it's a really, what do you do? You know, we've got people that, um, can work from home, we've got people that can't. Um, so I don't know, I don't know. I mean, you've got this massive, massive building.
Yeah, the cost of the building.
Stairs, I mean, you've got the, what's called the exchange, which a lot of money was spent on there and that's massive, massive. It's good, people coming from higher ends and stuff. Um, but, you know, as it is at the moment, I don't know. There's not gonna be the same amount of staff back here. The cafe downstairs has been shut ever since Covid.
Hmm.
And that was always a bustling place.
Yeah, yeah, I've been in it since then.
Yeah.
Yeah, we have a cafe at Essex Street, because we obviously, there's a, we have a couple of, couple of guys who are both ex, ex-street holders guys. Who, who, one of them's actually a chef, so we opened a community cafe. It was a nightmare. As soon as, as soon as Covid came. And we've got nobody in our offices and that would provide the, I think, but it, some of the local businesses around that, that area did deal. That started to announce, say, can we do breakfast? So we've started to introduce it back again, but it's.